At this time, I'll ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
Move for approval of the agenda?
Second.
Moved by Dr. Jackson, seconded by Mr. Johnson. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The agenda is approved, and our first item on the agenda is the Fiscal Support Services Committee. Chairman, Mr. Ford.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have one item of the Fiscal Support Services Committee, which is Fiscal Year 2025 General Fund Budget Work Session Number Two.
All right, thank you, Chair Ford. And as was the case with our last time, I'll begin the presentation, and our CFO will take over from there. Let me first say good afternoon, board members, employees, and the public, and welcome to our second General Fund Budget Work Session. It continues to be a busy but productive season, and we continue to look forward to use today to set the course for what we hope is a successful continuation and collaboration as we reach approval of our FY25 budget. Next slide. We continue with our mission and vision, understanding that our continued goal is to align our resources to fulfill the words and the intent of both of these items. Next slide. We further recognize...
Not shared.
Oh, it's not shared. Give us just a moment, we need to reshare this for our board members who are... All right, fantastic, thank you. We further recognize our goals and guiding principles that drive our strategic plan, with the ultimate desire for every student to have a formy experience, resulting in every graduate being prepared to make an informed decision about their next step in life. We recognize how important our budget is in ensuring we have sufficient human and physical resources in service to this end. And in our strategy map, our aim is to ensure this budget takes us on the journey to fulfill every community-inspired aspect of this diagram, keeping in mind our theory of action that is primarily driven by engaged, competent adults. This session represents a second look at the FY25 budget, given the information we have, so that we can receive feedback from you once again as our Board of Education. Several areas will be covered, as indicated in our roadmap, to include some of the work we have engaged here up to this point, along with concerns as we look into and beyond this upcoming fiscal year. To add, the last time you did give us some marching orders in terms of some questions, and we have those answers prepared for you in this presentation. We also acknowledge, in our preliminary takeaway, the impact of critical factors that have been on the table since before now, and hope this session further informs you as we continue this journey. Our chief financial officer, Eric Bush, will lead the majority of this session, but I want to continue to remind and ground us in already communicated budget priorities. We have five key categories, as I mentioned last time, where our budget priorities sit. In terms of literacy, as we move to the next slide, we want to ensure that our resources are appropriate and sufficient to produce above-grade level readers on all levels. In the area of readiness, we must ensure our programming and structures emphasize readiness on all levels leading up to graduation, keeping a keen focus on full access to future opportunities after high school for all students. In the space of engagement, we have started significant work on building internal strength of engagement and see the need to complete this work in order to get maximum inputs and outputs from all students and staff. In the area of capacity and retention, we want to position ourselves to recruit, retain, and build the best and brightest for our students who deserve the best, keeping in mind the importance of offering the most competitive salaries possible as a key factor in this endeavor. And finally, as an umbrella to the aforementioned priorities, we want to continue to improve our work in the space of school improvement with the most advantageous infrastructure. This will require the continued building of school-level capacity and appropriate oversight that extends our school improvement work to a daily and intentional focus. That being said, today we re-present budget recommendations for FY25 under each of one of our budget priority areas. In the area of literacy and readiness, we've already found cost savings, as I mentioned last time, and recommend Canvas as a solution for course completion and recovery, but also know that we recommend retaining needed funding for those resources that meet the needs of our students in response to our ongoing audit. With engagement, our recommendation is in service to engagement work we have already started, seeing this work all the way to completion and sustainability at the school level. In terms of capacity and retention, we recommend raises for all staff in addition to the $2,500 approved by the state in order to get us closer to being competitive in the field. And finally, we want, in this budget, to improve our focus on school improvement throughout the year for all of our schools, as we consider internal and external supports to make this happen. I've spoken with most of you in our one-on-ones already, and am happy that those approvals have already taken place. In this next slide, I'll turn it over to our chief financial officer, Eric Bush, who provides some clarity by way of reminder in some areas and additional information in others as we continue our ongoing audit.
Thank you, Board members. Give us one second while we address a technical issue.
All right, thank you. Good afternoon, President Friedman, board members, Dr. Sims. We're going to continue with Dr. Sims' last off, and we're going to jump right into the preparation and the slide you see right here, and how we got to the point we are today, and where we left off from work session number one. It's important to note that the board and internal stakeholders have spent a considerable amount of time doing a program and resource audit. This is an ongoing examination of expenditures in a way that we can create efficiencies and reduce costs. We'll continue to audit different areas of the board, and we'll conclude this process by work session three. This includes all costs that were previously funded by ARP and CARES, and will transition to the general fund. And we've also made a really concerted effort to hear from the school level to see what their input is, where their needs are, and what is most important to them. Highlights of that result of those program audits already is a reduction of identification and reduction of $425,000 out of the $5 million that we examined, which is about an 8.5% decrease of those costs. We continue to look at salaries, as Dr. Sims said. Obviously, teacher salary, classified salaries is a major concern, as is a leadership salary study that includes principals, assistant principals, and leadership above that level, where there continues to be a gap when compared to other districts. Lastly, we will wrap up our district finance, district budget and finance advisory. We've spent a considerable amount of time on that as well, getting community input and internal stakeholder input on our budget process. This next slide is just a reminder of the preliminary budget process we're in during the first three work sessions. All of our numbers at this point are preliminary, based on Gdow's information, the Tax Commissioner's Office, and other estimated costs that we know but try to anticipate for the future. Some of the highlights of this information is the certified, continues to be increases in state health insurance. Just last week, the governor's office decided to change the classified state health insurance increase in that amount from the previous amount. It's increasing to $16,650, which represents a $754,000 expense increase in fiscal year '25. The fiscal year '26 impact of all the healthcare is an additional $4.1 million that is on our radar and will have to be absorbed by the district. Technology expenses continue to be considerable. We didn't highlight the yellow section last time, but it's very important to note for the public that we estimate a $16 to $20 million technology need over the next four to six years. Those funds, those technology initiatives are funded through federal funds, EastFloss, and general funds, a combination of each, but those considerable costs have to be acknowledged and considered when we look toward the future. And obviously, inflationary costs continue to rise, and we continue to battle those. This is a quick graph, a graphical of the change that I just mentioned on the classified health insurance. That yellow bar over there is the updated slide from the previous work session show where it's gone, I forget the number, but it's gone to $16,650. The benefit slide presented now gives you percentage increases in that classified increase. So we're faced with, that's a 30% increase in health insurance costs for the classified staff. Next, I want to get into some assumptions about the budget numbers that we prepared. Currently, we are still using the mid-year QVE adjustment. We received that information on March 18th, and that adjustment showed a $401,000 increase due to FTE increases. We also, the state is also increasing the funding for security, school security, and school transportation. That's going to affect Vip County in the tune of about $3 million, which is a great increase. It helps close the gap in transportation funding that they've decreased over the years, and it gives us additional dollars to spend on school security.
All right, fantastic, thank you. We further recognize our goals and guiding principles that drive our strategic plan with the ultimate desire for every student to have a formy experience resulting in every graduate being prepared to make an informed decision about their next step in life. We recognize how important our budget is in ensuring we have sufficient human and physical resources in service to this end. And in our strategy map, our aim is to ensure this budget takes us on the journey to fulfill every community-inspired aspect of this diagram, keeping in mind our theory of action that is primarily driven by engaged competent adults. This session represents a second look at the FY25 budget, given the information we have, so that we can receive feedback from you once again as our Board of Education. Several areas will be covered as indicated in our roadmap to include some of the work we have engaged in up to this point, along with concerns as we look into and beyond this upcoming fiscal year. To add, the last time you did give us some marching orders in terms of some questions, and we have those answers prepared for you in this presentation. We also acknowledge in our preliminary takeaway, the impact of critical factors that have been on the table since before now, and hope this session further informs you as we continue this journey. Our Chief Financial Officer, Eric Bush, will lead the majority of this session, but I want to continue to remind and ground us in already communicated budget priorities. We have five key categories, as I mentioned last time, where our budget priorities sit. In terms of literacy, as we move to the next slide, we want to ensure that our resources are appropriate and sufficient to produce above grade level readers on all levels. In the area of readiness, we must ensure our programming and structures emphasize readiness on all levels leading up to graduation, keeping a keen focus on full access to future opportunities after high school for all students. In the space of engagement, we have started significant work on building internal strength of engagement and see the need to complete this work in order to get maximum inputs and outputs from all students and staff. In the area of capacity and retention, we want to position ourselves to recruit, retain, and build the best and brightest for our students who deserve the best, keeping in mind the importance of offering the most competitive salaries possible as a key factor in this endeavor. And finally, as an umbrella to the aforementioned priorities, we want to continue to improve our work in the space of school improvement with the most advantageous infrastructure. This will require the continued building of school-level capacity and appropriate oversight that extends our school improvement work to a daily and intentional focus. That being said, today we re-present budget recommendations for FY25 under each of one of our budget priority areas. In the area of literacy and readiness, we've already found cost savings, as I mentioned last time, and recommending Canvas as a solution for course completion and recovery, but also know that we recommend retaining needed funding for those resources that meet the needs of our students and in response to our ongoing audit. With engagement, our recommendation is in service to engagement work we have already started, seeing this work all the way to completion and sustainability at the school level. In terms of capacity and retention, we recommend raises for all staff in addition to the $2,500 approved by the state in order to get us closer to being competitive in the field. And finally, we want in this budget to improve our focus on school improvement throughout the year for all of our schools, as we consider internal and external supports to make this happen. I've spoken with most of you in our one-on-ones already, and am happy that those approvals have already taken place. In this next slide, I'll turn it over to our Chief Financial Officer, Eric Bush, who provides some clarity by way of reminder in some areas and additional information in others as we continue our ongoing audit. Mr. Bush?
Thank you, Board members. Give us one second while we address a technical issue. Good afternoon, President Friedman, Board members, Dr. Sims. We're going to continue with Dr. Sims left off, and we're going to jump right into the preparation and the slide you see right here, and how we got to the point we're at today, and where we left off from work session number one. It's important to note that the Board and internal stakeholders have spent a considerable amount of time doing a program and resource audit. This is an ongoing examination of expenditures in a way that we can create efficiencies and reduce costs. We'll continue to audit different areas of the Board, and we'll conclude this process by work session three. This includes all costs that were previously funded by ARP and CARES, and will transition to the general fund. And we've also made a really concerted effort to hear from the school level to see what their input is, where their needs are, and what is most important to them. Highlights of that result of those program audits already is a reduction of identification and reduction of $425,000 out of the $5 million that we examined, which is about an 8.5% decrease of those costs. We continue to look at salaries, as Dr. Sims said. Obviously, teacher salary, classified salaries is a major concern, as is a leadership salary study that includes principals, assistant principals, and leadership above that level, where there continues to be a gap when compared to other districts. Lastly, we will wrap up our district finance, district budget and finance advisory. We spent a considerable amount of time on that as well, getting community input and internal stakeholder input on our budget process. This next slide is just a reminder of the preliminary budget process we're in during the first three work sessions. All of our numbers at this point are preliminary, based on Gdow's information, the Tax Commissioner's Office, and other estimated costs that we know but try to anticipate for the future. Some of the highlights of this information is the certified and continues to be increases in state health insurance. Just last week, the Governor's Office decided to change the classified state health insurance, increasing that amount from the previous amount. It's increased into $16,650, which represents a $754,000 expense increase in fiscal year '25. The fiscal year '26 impact of all the healthcare is an additional $4.1 million that is on our radar and will have to be absorbed by the district. Technology expenses continue to be considerable. We didn't highlight the yellow section last time, but it's very important to note for the public that we estimate a $16 to $20 million technology need over the next four to six years. Those funds, those technology initiatives are funded through federal funds, ESFLOS, and general funds, a combination of each, but those considerable costs have to be acknowledged and considered when we look toward the future. And obviously, inflationary costs continue to rise, and we continue to battle those. This is a quick graph, a graphical of the change that I just mentioned on the classified health insurance. That yellow bar over there is the updated slide from the previous work session show where it's gone, I forget the number, but it's gone to $16,650. The benefit slide presented now gives you percentage increases in that classified increase. So we're faced with, that's a 30% increase in health insurance costs for the classified Next, I want to get into some assumptions about the budget numbers that we prepared. Currently, we are still using the mid-year QBE adjustment. We received that information on March 18th, and that adjustment showed a $401,000 increase due to FTE increases. We also, the state is also increasing the funding for security, school security and school transportation. That's going to affect Vip County in a tune of about $3 million, which is a great increase. It helps close the gap in transportation funding that they decreased over the years, and it gives us additional dollars to spend on school security. The next slide is, we still don't have any tax digest information, but I have increased the estimate from 1% to 3% in tax revenue. The reason is, is last year, our tax digest increased by 15.6%. The Tax Commissioner and Tax Assessor's Office are still seeing larger increases than my 1% estimate, so I felt comfortable moving it to at least 3% and increasing our revenue dollars just a little bit. With that said, the next highlights show that the legislative has a couple bills on the Governor's Desk right now, that it will increase the homestead exemption from the $2,000 to $10,000, that's the state exemption. That is a considerable increase that could affect us greatly, that we don't have input on, that the county will have to decide on. They've also proposed personal property tax exemptions that commercial entities pay, and that exemption is going, or is proposed, from $75,000 to $20,000 increase. We've assumed no increase in the millage rate in this first scenario. We still don't have any equalization funding information available at this point. That should be coming in any day now, and the numbers show the increase in school staff allocations that we have, we displayed in the first work session. I put a line in at the bottom here because we do have two new centers coming online, our Butler Center, that's going to be part of our CTAE program, will be coming online in the next year or two, and the Thompson Facility, next to the Thompson Stadium, will also begin to house some staff in the near future. Those calls have not been considered yet, but will be added in the next work session. This slide shows the detail of the changes in this budget from work session one to work session two. If you start at the top line where it says original budget projections for work session one, those are the numbers we presented last month. Start to work your way down into the changes in the budget, you'll see those increases in, from the 1% to 3%, and the tax digest revenue of $1.7 million, and the increase in QBE funding for $2.8 million, and then you'll start to see our line items of expenses that we have agreed on. So there's an increase in non-certified state health benefit costs that we talked about earlier. For this year, it's going to cost about $755,000. Continuation of the project aware program inside the district is an expense of $543,000. There's a small campus police reorganization effort that's cost $55,000. Time management staff, which is a person who manages our time systems and attendance systems in the district, ensuring that time and attendance is recorded properly. Maintenance and operational reorganization of $5,590. The addition of an assistant superintendent of the school administration that was talked about in the last board meeting, that office is about $300,000 combined when you have an assistant and some budgetary. And then the addition of athletic trainers, which is a move from ARP that was felt very important, of $373,000. The reductions I've also mentioned in the previous slides of $424,000 are reflected here, and this yields a net gain of right under $3 million to the positive. That brings our estimated deficit from a $19 million deficit to $17 million. This slide is a detail of those revenue changes that I've discussed earlier. You'll see on that top line, if you look at the far right where it says variances between work session one and work session two, you'll see that the local property taxes have increased by $1.7 million. These are reflections of the same numbers we just saw. It just shows you a little greater detail. The next change is in that QBE state revenue of $2.8 million. You can see on the right side, that's an increase of $1.6 million for that security grant that the state's awarded, and an increase in transportation allotments. Now, that one gets a little tricky because in the previous work session, I had accounted for a $750,000 gain in transportation, but they've increased that totally to about $1.5 million, so I'm just adding the difference in there. The last adjustment is our QBE adjustment of $401,000 that accounts for the increase This last slide in this section shows a recap at a high level of our recommended budget. So the preliminary budget shown in work session one showed a net surplus or a net deficit of $19.9 million, assuming that the raises are enacted, that the additional expenditures we budgeted for are approved, but with no millage change. If you go to work session number two, you'll see the numbers that we reflected in the previous two slides, which net out a $2.94 million increase. That leaves us with a revised budget deficit of $17 million. Next, we've updated our historical trend and preliminary projections, just to show you how it looks if we move forward with no increases in revenue and no salary increases. The assumptions here are no change in facility operations, the FTEs remain the same as projected in work session one, there's no change in the millage rate, no salary increases, operational costs remain to FY24 levels, et cetera. And we see where, if you look at that red line in the middle where it's excess or deficit, that deficit balance remains at $6.7, $6.8 million and continues on. It allows us to continue to have a fund balance percentage between annual expenses and the revenue of 23% and 24%, 20% and 25%, and you can see the decrease in our fund balance as we move through the years. The next slide is a more accurate representation of if the budget is approved for the salary increases, but no increase in funding, where we'll be. In '25, we would remain at a healthy 15.89% fund balance, but you'll see in '26, '27, '28, that fund balance begins to decrease substantially. The state minimum is 8%, that's where they want to see, so we would be below that 8% This slide is just for reference, this is where our current millage rate lands between other counties in our area. And as a reminder that the value of one mill in 2023 is $5.6 million. This next slide is in a response to the previous questions that the Board had for us in work session one. We hope this allows for adequate, you know, answering to you guys' questions, and there will be time at the end of the presentation for questions. And as we get into this slide, we want to reiterate that in work session one, we showed disparities between salaries on all the graphs in the presentation, and while the next couple slides address the teachers' discrepancies and what these raises would do to get us in line with the surrounding counties and areas, it's not focused on that leadership gap that we talked about earlier. We still want to keep that in mind, that there's a significant gap in various areas in the organization. So the questions that we're going to answer is, that were asked, is to provide an average classified increase versus the certified increase, and how much would it close the gaps versus the metro resa salary? What is the average savings to operate one less school? Question number three is review the state-funded positions versus locally-funded positions, and how many positions are there, and how much does that cost? And the last question is how do below-level schools receive funding? So the first question here is answered in this slide, and it's actually really good news. If we were to enact the pay raise that we proposed, we come very close to being on the average scale that we presented from last time, from the 2024 metro resa study. You can see at the zero years that there's a pretty good increase in that number. It gets us $1,400 above at the T4 bachelor's level, but in year five, there continues to be a gap there. We need to look into that more to see why that gap exists in year five, but it does. And then by year 10, there continues to be a leveling out and an increase in the higher degree level positions. You can note, I've done as an overall average at the bottom, the overall certified increase equaled about 6.28% of average salaries, and that's a comparison to the classified increase of 5% that we proposed. Question number two was asking about the average savings to operate one less school. This is a representation of the teachers and the administrative staff and the overhead cost of each facility. Now, if those kids were to move to a different facility, we are still going to receive funding for them, they're still going to cost when we have to pay for teachers to educate, but the savings we have is you have one less principal, assistant principal, media specialist, and those positions listed in this slide. That's an average savings of right under $1 million, and when you add in operational costs such as power, electricity, garbage, that's a savings of around $1.4 million, no, $1,040,000. There are also some hidden costs that I've put on the side that you really got to take into consideration when you're operating a building. We have to transport kids from school to school, so those kids would have to be transported to another facility. Those costs could increase or decrease in that transportation. It would just, we'd have to do studies to figure that out. Technology infrastructure, though, considers to be, continues to be a high cost, so updating networks, putting panels on walls for learning, any other technology that you can think of, that has to be replaced every three to five years, so you would be saving that cost in a facility as well. And then you also have the daily and monthly maintenance for grounds, facilities, HVAC, roofing, air conditioning, all those costs that go into a building that aren't captured in just the overhead costs that we've displayed in this $1 million. Next, we were asked to review state-funded positions versus locally-funded positions. This is at a very high level, but we allocated this year for 1,473 teachers, and on the QBE schedule, we're funded for 1,365 teachers. That's a difference of 108. When you put an average salary to that 108 teachers, you're talking about $10 million of teacher salary that is locally funded. The council level, the local funded is two, the rest of those are funded by the state, for a total cost of $210 million. Media specialists are funded through the state. We actually have two less media specialists, but we've made some of that up, hired media clerks to support those specialists in each school. We have 22 and a half clerks that are generally funded, and that net cost is $108,000 that is locally funded. We have 36 principals or principal directors, all of which are funded by the state, but that one is at Northwoods, and they are not funded. Assistant principals, we put 45 assistant principals in our facilities, we're funded for 32. That leaves a difference of 12 assistant principals that are funded locally, at a tune of $1.7 million. Just in those high-level positions and teacher staff, that's a cost of $13 million to the And the last question we had was, how do those under, how do the schools with less students than state requires, that we showed in the previous work session, how are those schools funded? And the easy answer there is, they are funded exactly like any other school. The state's not saying we're not going to fund you because you don't have enough kids in your school, but there is one case, Burn Elementary, where if a school building closes at the Board's decision or the Superintendent's, and which it did in the past, when you reopen that school, the state doesn't fund the operational costs. They don't give you a function of their formula for operational maintenance. So that operational maintenance cost is borne by the, is paid for by the local dollars and not reimbursed by the QBE dollars. Just going through the next steps real quick before we get into questions. The next steps, of course, our tentative budget is adopted in May, that'll be coming up real soon. We'll have two public hearings, and then hopefully have an approved budget in June and time for the fiscal year to start in July. Following those two public hearings, we must adopt a final budget by June 30th or adopt a spending resolution until a budget has been adopted. Tax millage rates are determined, and public hearing meetings are required if we move in that direction. Next and last slide is a calendar of events for the next coming months. The next meeting will be May 7th, that'll be our work session number three, which will lead right into May 16th to the tentative of adoption of the proposed 2025 budget. We will start to have public hearings after that, and hopefully have a final adoption on June 20th. So that's our presentation for today. That's a lot of information to digest, but we'd love to have your questions.
Please, Board members. Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. Thank you for your report. Thank you for your report.
You're welcome.
On slide 32?
Okay.
I didn't quite understand what you were saying about Burn Elementary School, how that school was funded. Can you repeat that?
Yes, sir. Yeah, we are funded for every kid that sits in that building, just like we are for every other school. So that school earns a principal, it earns assistant principals, custodians, counselors, everybody just like another school. The only difference is, is because we closed that school in the past and reopened it, the state doesn't give us extra operational costs that it does for the other schools. Now, those other operational costs aren't covered 100% either, but they do give us dollars to support facilities that are under their approval.
So when you say operational cost, what does that include?
They give us a small function for repair and maintenance, for buildings, for utility and expenses. I don't know that exact factor, but there's a small factor they give us, the state provides to operate schools that are on their approved list. But, so it's not a huge cost that we don't get for Burn Elementary, and it does provide a lot of value because Burn sits outside of a district where it was hard to get to, and the kids were having to get bused for a long way to the other schools.
So are you saying Burn's is not a state-approved school?
It's an approved school, but since the facility was closed, they don't recognize it for that operational and maintenance piece of the funding mechanism.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Mr. Chairman? Go ahead, Dr. Simmons.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bush, for your presentation. My first question for you is in regard to legislation that passed this year. And if you're in Assembly, has your office had opportunity to review legislations that will impact the district's budget?
We try to keep very close eye on that. Now, the session has ended, and a lot of the bills are sent on the Governor's Desk for final approval, so we're waiting on that process to happen, but are you referring to any in particular?
Yes, I'm about to get to that. So within, after the four-day window that's passed, you all are prepared to come back to us to let us know, you know, the additional funding that we'll be receiving, other restrictions and parameters that will be receiving, that will be impacting us as well?
Yes. The ones that we definitely know about, yes. The biggest one I'm concerned about is that homestead exemption increase and how our county will deal with that.
Very well. And also, I'm interested in the school choice one, in regard to the financial impact that that will have as we look at how many of our schools fall into that category, that would qualify for that, for individuals to benefit from or to use that as an opportunity, and what does that overall financial impact look like, potential impact looks?
I can't speak on that specifically at this point. We will dive deeper into that, but I do know on a high level that we're not anticipating a great shift or our financial impact immediately. Now, as that develops, I can see that becoming a problem. But right now, there are restrictions in place, it's hard for other districts and schools to send the kids that are willing to transfer, and it is yet to be seen until the rules are set in place and how that will play out.
Okay, very well. My next question, I'll go back to slide 12. So looking at the preliminary budget recommendations for FY '25. And I've shared this before, I do have some concern with the replacement of ingenuity. So I did want to engage more in some questions and answers with the appropriate administrators for this particular segment.
Go. Do y'all know who would?
She's here.
Susan Jones can answer some of those questions.
Good evening.
Hey, good evening, Susan. Thank you. So for ingenuity, so I'm very familiar with ingenuity, especially my, you know, full-time job, day-to-day operations. I know that ingenuity has truly become a mainstay in our schools in helping with course completion and recovery, providing recovery solutions. So I'm curious as to the move from ingenuity to Canvas. Was this more so of a financial savings or is there a particular data that's pointing to Canvas as being more effective in this regard than ingenuity? Who's, who's up there?
Okay, so edgenuity will still be used for our credit recovery courses in all of our high schools. The part that we're moving to Canvas is concerning VIP. So there will be some movement to Canvas for our VIP.
Okay. So what does that, what would that actually look like?
So we're looking at Georgia Virtual School, and their courses are in Canvas.
So we'll be adding, so, because the verbiage that we have on our papers, it says replacing ingenuity with Canvas, so that was a little confusing. But you're saying that we'll be now utilizing Canvas in addition to ingenuity, that would be in result pre additional costs, correct?
So the greater cost was from edgenuity, using edgenuity for VIP, so using solely edgenuity. So now we're looking at using Georgia Virtual School that will not be as costly. And those courses are built in Canvas.
Okay. And what does that cost savings look like?
So edgenuity for VIP was over a million?
She's saying edgenuity is 1.8 million dollars. We would have to get the cost of what move was to Canvas.
So edgenuity for VIP was 1.2 million?
1.8.
So with this, with Canvas, does Canvas have asynchronous capabilities?
So the court, so we're looking at Georgia Virtual School. And Georgia Virtual School has courses built in Canvas that are for online. So they could, they can be used in a variety of ways. Asynchronous could be one of them. We're using them as part of our online virtual school.
Okay. I'm not familiar with Georgia Virtual School, so bear with me. So with us moving from ingenuity to Canvas solely for?
For VIP.
For the VIP academy. So SOAR students will still be able to utilize ingenuity, is that correct?
I believe we, I believe we left SOAR. I would have to look, I would have to check on that.
Absolutely.
And if I may, we're talking right now reference to a plan that we continue to engage in. Even at an initial glance or continued glance, we see possible needs for the continued use of edgenuity, perhaps not in its whole form. So we're still at the table with the team for the sake of clarity in terms of what course completion and recovery will look like for that space. So we anticipate returning to you, and I'll take responsibility for this particular inaccurate statement that I put here, but we look forward to the next budget work session to give you further clarity. But just if you can give us some time to continue to work with the team, I think we'd give you a much better answer.
Okay.
We appreciate you raising that.
Most definitely, thank you. And I was just saying on this, you know, just thinking about just our transient population within the district, that's what I'm very curious about, that if students are no longer wanting to be utilizing ingenuity and would utilize Canvas, you know, is there a, is there, are there asynchronous capabilities to it that would get allowed for those students who are going back and forth from school to school or from, you know, from their home school to SOAR and then hoping to go back to their home school after the time there? How would that, you know, keep them on track to be successful? So thank you so much for your reconsideration of that. And, Mr. Chairman, that's all the questions I have.
All right. Any other questions? Ms. Prentice.
I have a quick follow-up. You've mentioned the bill that's sitting on the governor's desk, which I assume has been passed by the legislature regarding the homestead exemption, and you mentioned how the county may respond to that. Can you?
Well, I'm learning this process too.
A little more explanation, please.
I can't describe in detail, but what I do know is that the proposal online is to move the state homestead part of our exemption from 2,000 to 10,000 dollars. Currently, Bibb County honors that 2,000 and honors a $5,000 addition. So we have a $7,000 homestead exemption in Bibb County. If we add $8,000 to that exemption, potentially, we're looking at a $15,000 exemption. But our county has to vote on that, I believe. And that's the, that's the, I'm not clear.
Okay, that's what I was unclear. There's a component to this that the county have to agree with, based on what they're doing right now in addition to 2,000.
That's correct.
Okay. I just wasn't clear where that, their involvement came in, the governor signed it, so. If that happened, do you have an idea of what type of an impact that would be?
I don't. It was a quick calculation this morning, but it was, my rough estimate could be in the neighborhood of 4 million plus dollars.
Okay. That, I was, I was looking, I was kind of curious in light of the idea that a mill is estimated at 5.6 million. If that happened, how much would we be talking, that we'd be potentially losing in local, I guess, property tax revenues?
Now, we'll work with the tax commissioner's office to see if we can find out that number.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Woodford.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation, Mr. Bush. Referencing slide number 32, the state funding is based on student enrollment and various need classifications. What does that mean?
What I was meaning there is if you look at the state formula allocation sheet, we're funded on different functions like EIP, early intervention programs, gifted programs, we earn additional dollars for any of the special education program tiers, we earn additional dollars for. So that's kind of where I was trying to describe in that statement.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman, I believe Ms. Hamlin has a question.
Okay. All right. Go ahead, Ms. Hamlin.
I can hear you on my computer.
So Ms. Hamlin's question was on slide 19. Could we explain the campus police reorganization cost and the admin assistant for the assistant superintendent of schools? The reason those are added, I can address the superintendent of schools. Each assistant superintendent is staff with an administrative assistant. So we went ahead and budgeted that position, added those costs in this, in this analysis here. The campus police reorganization, I can get close to this, but it's really a change in addition to a sergeant, which is a change in the position from, from, that we currently have. So it's not an addition of a position, it's a change in, in status of those positions.
She asked if the executive officers have admin assistants, and they share an admin assistant. Three of them have one admin assistant. You're welcome.
Thank you. And thank you, Ms. Hamlin. I forgot my note from about page 19. So thank you, Mr. Bush, for answering, for providing some clarity on the campus police reorganization. I'm also curious about the maintenance and operations reorganization. What's that look like?
That small change in maintenance operation was a, is a tweak in a position to raise the director, was raised from a director one to a two, I believe, or a two to a three. And the admin assistants are aligned with those director levels. There was a small increase for that maintenance and operational reorganization to get her salary aligned with her peers.
Gotcha. And the time management staff moved from ERP?
So we initiated, so time management is our, is called executive time, is a time and attendance software. And we implemented that program in 2021, and it takes a staff member to, one, be a help desk for the district employees, and two, to be a troubleshooter and to do all the upgrades necessary for that program. So that is a shift from that position to continue on that surface in the district.
So it's a software?
Yeah, it's a time management software, like a clock in, clock out, and it accounts for our absences as well.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Any other questions, board members?
I do have a few questions. Bush, I want to go back to page 12 in the edgenuity's replacement.
Okay.
So it applies only to VIP?
That was not understanding.
Or does it apply to SOAR as well, and we don't know yet?
It only applies to VIP academy? Yes.
So what does edgenuity cost the system as a whole?
Its original cost currently is 1.8 million dollars.
No, I mean the whole system. What does edgenuity, edgenuity cost the whole system? I heard it costs VIP 1.8 million.
For the sake of specificity, if we can get back on that question, we'll get a specific answer. We appreciate it. Do we need some time just to make sure we get an accurate answer? Great.
All right. I appreciate that, because I want to make sure I know exactly what we're, what y'all are looking at doing. Is there any idea of what the cost savings would be for move from edgenuity to Canvas for VIP?
I don't have that information right. But we will get to you about work session number three.
Well, as soon as you can, I'd appreciate that, because that's a pretty significant change. I want to look at the slide 12. The second is a point leadership salary study. Can you tell me who's doing that?
That's internally. Is that correct, Dr. Sims?
Mr. Prentice, can, can you address that further?
Good evening, board members. Dr. Sims. So Dr. Sims, in one of our one-on-ones a few weeks ago, wanted me to take a look at where we are in terms of admin salaries from the principal, assistant principal ranks up through the central office from directors and above. And so that's some very detailed work. So we partnered with a company called Education Planners out of the Atlanta area, who have been looking at our admin salary scales in relation to similar-sized districts, specifically looking at Henry and Fayette, because those are two that we compete with and that are pretty comparable when you look at their student numbers in terms of where they rank. The state puts all of us in the large schools category, but those are more relative to where we are. And so Education Planners has been working through that. They sent me some final estimates, and I forwarded them to Dr. Sims today, and we're going to take a look at them later this week.
Was there an RFP for this Education Planner?
No, sir. We didn't do an RFP because it was total about $9,000 is what it cost us.
Well, since you're up there, the Metro Research salary study, when was that completed?
Well, Metro Research has always updated salaries, and it's depending on whether or not the districts, all districts don't participate. You have to pay a fee every year, and you send your salary information in, and Metro Research gives you access to that data.
So did they prepare a specific report for us?
No, they don't do a district-by-district report. No, sir.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Prentice.
Yes, sir.
I don't have any other questions. Board members, anybody else? All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Bush. I'll turn it back over to President Prentice.
Thank you. Dr. Sims, if you have anything you wanted to add before we leave this presentation?
No, sir. Thank you once again for the questions and the feedback. We look forward to rolling that into our budget session number three.
Thank you, Mr. Morton. Thank you, Mr. Bush, for your presentation. Dr. Sims, at this time, we will go to the Personnel Services Committee. I recognize Dr. Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm the chair, letting a motion to enter to executive session for the purposes of personnel matters, future acquisition of property, pending litigation, school safety, and/or cyber security. Motion by Dr. Diller is our second.
Okay.
Second by Ms. Jones. Are there any questions? If you know, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say aye. Being chair, ayes have it, and we are now moving to executive session.
Thank you, Dr. Jackson. I believe that we will be adjourned to the new executive session conference room. In fact, and board members, I agree, please move that way. We are in executive session.
Can I make a motion to come out of executive session?
I recommend Dr. Jackson's decision.
All in all, so.
Now you wouldn't be wrong.
The chairman and I tell the motions come out of the second session.
So.
Motion by Ms. Johnson, second by Dr. Wood. Are there any questions? If you're not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose say nay. Being sure the ayes have it, we are now out of executive session. First item under Personnel Services Committee is P S five, a school-based administration. Excuse me, a school-based administrator recommendation. Is there a motion for approval?
So.
Motion by Ms. Johnson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by President Freeman. Are there any questions? If you're not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose say nay. If you're in charge, P S five, school-based administrator recommendation has been approved. Chair will yield to Dr. Sims to announce our newest administrator.
Thank you, Chair Jackson. It's my pleasure to announce Adrian Hurley as the new principal of John Gar Lewis Elementary School.
Also. And Mr. President, P S six has been withdrawn from each other. That completes the work of Personnel Services Committee.
Thank you, Chairman Jackson. I believe that concludes the business of the board for today. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Oh.
A very quick motion by Dr. Dillard. That was second by Dr. Woodford. In discussion. Although in favor of adjourned, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'll say the same. And if you're in charge, the ayes have it, and we are adjourned. Thank you.